Welcome, everybody. Calling the July meeting of the AMSA Board of Trustees to order at 6:38. And we have a number of new trustees here, so that's great. And so I just want to say that Jean and Jill were both approved by DISS, so they're full voting members now. And Brianna Willby, her paperwork just kind of got mixed up at DISS, not us. So there's no problem, though. And Raul is absent today, but he was approved also, but his term starts August 1. All right, so today's agenda, hopefully we can move through a lot of the open meeting pretty quickly. In addition to our updates, we're going to have a brief, brief discussion about strategic planning, about the faculty and family survey results, I don't know if that's going to be brief. We can give quick task force updates. We need to, STEM-Storing Eagles is asking us to nominate some people to their board, which the AMSA Board has to approve. We'll go through a finance and audit update, and then updates from the other committees as well. We are planning to go into executive session to discuss litigation strategies, to consider the purchase and lease of real property, strategy for negotiating with represented and nonrepresented personnel, because doing so in open session would be detrimental to our position. And I'm making a note that the meeting is being videotaped, and we do have Allison Cohen participating remotely. Any questions on the agenda?
Do we have a timekeeper?
Would someone like to be a timekeeper?
Oh, me, me, please, me.
Okay, Ken's gonna be our timekeeper.
Chaos will reign.
So the first order of business is actually to look at the minutes, so can we take a look at the minutes? Look at that, these were distributed this morning, not this afternoon.
I have one change in the minutes. Sarah says that I was here last week and I was not. So I wasn't on here and I did not vote.
Okay. So Lucy goes in the absence.
And I gave Sarah a change on the campaign results, which she has included in this, but it's different from what we saw this afternoon.
Oh, okay. But the campaign results were what you had given us as of June, right? As of the June board meeting?
I gave you an estimate, which turned out to be incorrect.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's why I corrected.
Okay, any other changes? Wow, look at all these things you voted for, Lucy. If there are no other changes, then I will entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Chris made the motion. A second.
Mike.
Mike made the, seconded the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, okay. There was no public comment, so we will move. Oh, this is the weird things that Board on Track does. The faculty rep update is supposed to say Brianna Murphy. It's not supposed to say Tom Azurito.
All right, so my first update should be really short, given that it's the summer, so I feel like I have a fairly easy job this time around. So this summer thankfully has been really quiet here at AMSA, at least from a teacher perspective, especially compared to previous years. Luckily, there have not been the wave of teacher departures that we've seen for the past three years, so it's a great change to see take place, and definitely a true sign of the prevalent feeling of hope amongst the faculty that the future of AMSA is bright and worth sticking around for. By the middle of June, many teachers were definitely ready to get to this point of the summer, you know, definitely finish up this rocky year, school year that we've just all been through. And summer provides teachers with the time for much-needed rest and relaxation, in addition to travel and time spent with family and friends. Many teachers also are busy with second jobs or professional development, ranging from one-day workshops to multi-week workshops, and these types of opportunities most always lead to some kind of feeling of being re-energized for the approaching school year. There's just a few concerns to share from the faculty. The first is that many teachers are saddened to learn of the departure of Ben Keeler, who was the lower school assistant principal, especially those who worked with him in the lower school, were, you know, very, especially surprised and saddened to hear of his departure. He was definitely well-respected and liked by students and faculty alike, and were, you know, definitely see it as a tough loss, but again, hopeful that things will transition smoothly to a newer administrative structure, and we do wish him the best for his future. Other teachers are anxious to hear of any kind of update about the search for a new facility, and hope to be informed as the search progresses. Teachers and staff spent time on our professional development day at the end of the school year, brainstorming our hopes for a new facility, including dedicated spaces for physical education and auditorium and cafeterias. Teachers also look forward to the possibility of having their own classrooms and having shared department resource areas. The faculty certainly realizes that not every item on this wish list can be guaranteed, but it is our hope that the needs of all departments are carefully considered as the new facility is designed. There is just, or just under a month remaining of summer, as returning faculty and staff will begin orientation on Wednesday, August 23rd, while new employees come back on Tuesday, August 22nd. And that's it for my first report.
Any questions for Brianna?
Very concise.
I'll try to keep it that way.
How'd you do on time?
Oh, excellent. Marvelously.
Good, start strong.
Actually, Tom noted yes.
We're ahead of schedule, isn't it?
We're ahead of schedule, that was supposed to be five, they were both supposed to be five and five. These were leftovers from last time, when Tom had asked for extra time, since it was his last one. And same thing, parent rep is not supposed to be listed, all the parent reps should have been changed as well. I will go into Board on Track and change those, but Jill?
Well, I think the parent rep report's gonna be even shorter. I only got my email out yesterday, and the only responses that I received were more congratulatory, welcome aboard, thanks for serving. I did receive one question, it wasn't board-related, but all of the responses have been very positive from the parents, and I have put the offer out there to, well, I asked if anyone had any input regarding board-related matters, so hopefully if anyone does, they're compiling emails to me now, and I will hopefully have some more to report next month. But so far, so good.
It's good, that's great. So at the beginning of this school year, hopefully both of you can do an orientation of the board to your constituencies. We have sort of previous slide docs that you can use, so you can do an orientation for, maybe during orientation week, or, you know, early in the school year, and Jill, if you could do it at the September PTO meeting, that would be great. Okay, so now we'll have our ED report.
Okay, I was hoping to be shorter than I usually am, but it didn't work out. And it's all in 18-point font, because I'm blind, so. So thanks to everyone for coming. I hope, I hope everyone here has had a chance to enjoy the summer. We were just at Gettysburg Battlefield in Pennsylvania, and that was terrific. So I have four things today, first, an update on teacher evaluation, teacher and counselor evaluation tool. I wanted to start by thanking the team that was involved in making, creating that new tool, which we completed in June. The team included Sarah Morrissey, Matt Anderson, Wiley, Colhane, Scott Dre, Steve Smith, Lino Alvarez, Alex Waldron, Mike Naraki, Rob Luskey, Christina Jagalowski, and Ms. Lindsay. They finished the product and created a new evaluation tool, but I think what's more important than the product that the team produced was how the team produced that product, and they did so in a very cooperative manner, they worked as a team, they raised questions with each other, they challenged each other, all of us openly and collaboratively, and they came together around ideas which they, all of us believe will help our teachers and counselors, and ultimately, our students as well. And I know we've said this about the Scheduling Avengers, so too should it be said about the team that put together the evaluation tool. The method that they did this, and the key to everything that we're trying to do at AMSA over the past few months and going forward, is really the key to our success. And that key is working collaboratively, working as a team. And it just so happened that this past week, Rick and Pauline were kind enough to provide me a very helpful article about how to create a very strong and positive workplace culture. And one of the main points in that article was the importance of creating a very open, democratic, and inclusive culture, and that the way to do that is not so much to talk about it and to say it, but to actually do it. And as you can see, the author of the article, who I guess Pauline knows personally, the author stated that what differentiates the culture of a very effective institution, be it a school or a business, are the people and their actual behaviors, and how their behaviors become the common practices of the institution. And I think that our evaluation team, just like the Scheduling Avengers, demonstrated how we can build a very strong, very supportive, and very collaborative culture at AMSA, and they did so not through words, but through action. So I really want to thank each and every one of them. As personally, it's just fantastic to see that, to see the dynamic energy that people who know what they're doing and have great ideas, to see that come together and see them share those ideas, and to produce a really good product. It's just great to see. I'm very optimistic, everybody has a copy of the evaluation rubric in your packet, I'm very optimistic that the rubric that the team created will serve as a very useful tool in enabling our teachers and counselors to learn and improve their craft, and to do so with a very, within a very trusted, supportive, collaborative, open environment. And I've, as you can see, I've attached the form. The goal of the form, and the goal of the team, the goals of the team was to create a evaluation tool that is very, very clear, very specific, that promotes good teaching practices, is very user-friendly for the folks who will be using it, that promotes open and collegial conversations between the evaluator and the person being evaluated, and also one that encourages professional development. So you'll also see on the form that it says draft. That's intentional. We believe that before this tool can become fully operational, it'll need to be tested and calibrated and tested and retested and revised perhaps a little bit, or perhaps a lot, so that by the end of the year, we are very, very hopeful that by the end of the year, we'll have a tool that will be readily trusted, very, very useful, and help our teachers and counselors grow. So that's the update on the evaluation tool. So secondly, an update on some administrative changes since the end of the year. There've been a few, there's four in particular that I wanted to highlight. First, we've hired a new Director of Special Education, her name is Maureen Labelle, she's going to be starting very shortly. She has lots of experience, she's a graduate of Worcester State College, and recently served as the Special Ed Coordinator at Holyoke, and she also served as Special Ed Director at Shrewsbury Elementary and Bay Path Regional Vocational High School. So in addition to hiring a new Director of Special Education, we also just hired a, this past June, Director of School Counseling, whose name is Catherine Driver, just like Maureen, she has lots of experience, graduate of Skidmore University of Southern Maine, and she was a Director of Guidance at a charter school, and a charter school devoted to
Oh, that's fantastic.
Science and technology, so she's got that background. Ellen and I are really, really excited about Maureen and Catherine, they're very, very passionate, very, very energetic, lots and lots of experience, and we're looking forward to working with them and helping them, and getting our Guidance Department, Counseling Department, Special Education Department to the next level, and we're very confident that they can do that. Also wanted to let everybody know that we've hired a Literacy Coordinator, Catherine Cole, who has just a ton of experience and knowledge, and she's going to be working with our Special Education and General Education students, who have some gaps in reading and writing, she's also gonna help us put together our ELL curriculum, our reading and writing curriculum. And Ellen and I both believe she's gonna be really, really instrumental in helping students who might have some gaps access our curriculum, so that we can fulfill the mission of our school, and that is that all students, regardless of background and ability, can excel in all subjects.
When do these people start, or have this?
They're both first or second week of August.
Great.
Yep. So one more important update, Brianna, Ms. Murphy mentioned this, so wanted to talk about it as well. One of our vice principals, Ben Keeler, has left AMSA. So Ellen and I, when, after Ben left, we decided, after quite a bit of thought and reflection, to return to our previous administrative structure, and you can see the flow chart is, of the org chart is attached in your packet. So we have one principal, who is Ms. Lindsay, one vice principal, Mr. Naraki, and two deans of students, Mr. Friar in the upper school, Mr. Amaral in the lower school. And Ms. Murphy and I had a, Ms. Murphy was kind enough to share her concerns with me before the meeting, and to talk about the concerns that lower school teachers have. So we're very committed to addressing those concerns. We want a strong and very active administrative presence in the lower and the upper school. So we've kind of geographically moved folks around, so we've moved Mr. Friar's office to the upper school, where he's going to be with Ms. Lindsay, so the dean and the principal will be in the upper school. Mr. Naraki has moved from the upper school to the lower school, and he'll be right next to Mr. Amaral. In addition to that, and as a further effort to address the very legitimate concerns that lower school teachers have, we want to really, really put a lot of focus into this, and we really, we know the importance of maintaining a very strong, very active, and very supportive administrative presence throughout the school, certainly in the lower school. We want all of our teachers to feel very, very supportive, and we want to work very collaboratively with them, and listen closely to them, and to really understand the needs and concerns of kids in grade six through eight, which can be quite different than high school kids. So that is front and center on Ellen's mind and on my mind, is to address those concerns. And then last but not least, a quick update on our plans for the first week. So we've been working, in between going to Gettysburg or other trips that some of us had, we've been working very hard on the start of the upcoming year in August. So two big goals, as we've mentioned previously, two big goals we have for the year, including boosting spirit morale, and to dramatically improve our professional development and mentoring programs, and we're looking forward to kickstarting that come August. So doing, to do that during orientation week, Jess Bone, Jess, very fortunate, she agreed to become the head of our mentoring program. She's going to be working with our teacher mentors to welcome and assist our new teachers, and we all believe that a very, very strong mentoring program is going to be absolutely key to our success, and we're really excited to have a teacher like Jess, and of her caliber, who's going to run our program, and she's already off to a fantastic start. So in addition to kicking off our mentoring program that first week that we are back, we also will have several workshops, we've created another team, we have the Scheduling Avengers, the Evaluation Team Avengers, we have the PD Avengers. So we have a team of teachers, also one department chair, so Alex Waldron, Tony McDonald, Kristy Jagalowski, and Crystal Lee Koonen are going to be leading two PD workshops. One will be designed to inspire, and the other will be focused on classroom management. We really want to turn that orientation week into like a great way to jumpstart the year, kickstart it, not to sit at chairs and desks and just be bored out of our minds, but really get off to a great start, really be excited, and to have the teachers lead some really important and fundamental PD workshops would just be a great way to do that. We also have a really important workshop on IEPs and 504s to help all of us better understand the importance of IEPs and 504s. We have, also have workshops on bullying, plus portals, plagiarism, and cheating as well. And then last but not least, as I said, we really want to focus a lot on boosting spirit morale, so every day, we're gonna have a nice hour for lunch, we will have catered lunches, great chance to sit and talk to each other, talk about what our summers, what we did over the summer. I will have a field day, the last, the later part of the afternoon on Friday, we'll have sports and activities, free ice cream, and hopefully lots of really, really good cheer. So I'm really looking forward to it. So thanks, and enjoy the rest of the summer, and go Eagles.
That's great. Does anybody have any questions?
I have a quick, that was a great report, obviously, as usual, thank you. You tried out the schedule at the end of the last, at the end of the year, I think, at the end of the school year, tried the new schedule.
Oh, yes, yes.
So how'd that go? Just curious how that went.
Yes. I think it went well. I know a lot of the, I've heard from parents who said it was great to have their kids run through it, and the kids were excited about it as well. Maybe Brianna would like to speak about how teachers, what they thought of it.
So as an EP teacher, I got to, and I know all the, or mostly EP teachers were able to give summer work, so it was a great opportunity for that. The one thing I will say is I definitely, at the end of the school year, a lot of us aren't at our best, so I know I was really worried about making a good first impression, because I was exhausted and maybe not like super happy like usual with meeting these students.
That's interesting.
So that would maybe be the only bad thing. I think there's a little bit of that from students as well, because, you know, it's the last couple days of school, so it was a little bit of like, you know, we're here, just trying to make it through the half-day, like that kind of attitude, but for us and for them. But I think overall, they, everyone really liked just seeing, you know, seeing who's gonna be in your class for them, getting to see their classmates. I know some of the guidance counselors had a few students come to them and were concerned about not having friends in their classes, so that kind of, you know, that was one kind of bad part, kind of added to, you know, some of the issues that guidance has to deal with at that point in the year. But overall, I think it was, it was cool to try it out and to see how the schedule will be, and again, to see the rosters of students, and get a sense of what our classes will be like in the fall.
Good, thank you.
From a parent's perspective, what I heard from students is they thought it was great that they could, you know, see what it was gonna be like. In particular, going from the middle school to the high school was a good thing to see what it would look like, so.
That's good.
You liked it.
Any other questions?
I just have one comment. So, first, I appreciate the large font, because I have trouble.
I started, several years ago, I look back at my old documents, I started in 12-point, moved to 14, 16, and this year it's been 18. Next year it's gonna be 33 or 34.
That'll actually even work better for me.
Ebert and no glasses, I bet.
But as I went through it, I was just marking the various highlights and how they related to things we wanted to see addressed. And it's just like, point after point after point, and so, I mean, I just appreciate the fact that various issues and concerns are just being, that have come up in the roundtables in other areas, are just being addressed point after point, so that's fantastic to see.
Oh, thank you. I think it's, in addition to what we said there, I think it's really important that as a school, we're very open to feedback and criticism, and helpful suggestions, and you know, the more feedback we have, Ellen and I have, and all of us have, the better, and if we are open and very transparent about it and address it, the better. We can solve everything if we encourage feedback and encourage concerns and suggestions, and if we work really hard to solve them. Doing away with a bunker mentality, and embracing ideas is what we need.
Excellent. That's great.
That's great. I realize that, Ed, I probably should have asked you to do the trustee nominations at the very beginning. I'm like, ooh, we're at the beginning of chair business, maybe we should just go ahead and do those, bump that agenda topic up.
Okay, I figured we would come to it, so.
Yeah.
We have three, I guess, three individuals for nominees here. So, let's see. And this is interesting, because this is the first time, I think, at least that I've been involved, where we've got the folks who have been on the board previously, so we're actually using our sort of recently-approved process whereby, for returning board members, it's a sort of streamlined process where they aren't necessarily having to go through all of the individual interviews that we did initially. So, let's see, I'm gonna, I'm working for my minutes here, but I'm gonna go ahead and do, what is it, my agenda, how we had them listed. Okay, so Chris is up first here, and it's, I think, based on having been on the board four years, three years? Three years, so.
Three-ish.
Finished one term.
Finished one term. So I'll say a little bit about Chris's background, which is actually right off of our website, and then, Chris, you can sort of maybe spend a minute just sort of talking about why you want more of the book, more of the board. After finishing one term. But Chris presently, or has been, an executive or president of the Greater Worcester Community Foundation. It's been over 20 years at the United Way of Massachusetts, and while there, developed an after-school STEM education program for many young people in the greater Boston area and Merrimack Valley area also, and has been a past president of the Marlboro Community Development Program, and I know has contributed extensively to the board for the time that I've been on the board for the last several years. So with that, Chris, I will ask you if you wanna say a few words.
Sure. So it's been exciting. I'm looking forward to being exciting in a different way in the coming few years. So I've really, I've enjoyed serving thus far, it's been a real head spinner with the changes over the last few years, and I think now is just particularly exciting because of all the changes that are occurring and have occurred, and I think we really have an opportunity to reformulate and pursue a vision. My personal interest in doing this is I'm really interested in STEM education as an avenue of socioeconomic mobility for first time, for kids who are first, first in their family bound for college, and how to mix that, and it's not, it's not completely clear to me, how to make that a priority in a meritocratic institution that does its admissions by lottery. So this is not an easy puzzle to solve, but it is one that I'm very interested in doing. Also, and I've been so grateful to hear the talk over the last few months, the idea that children, regardless of their ability or where they come from, can excel, and really taking that seriously. And I've said to some people here that, yeah, being the best school in the state, that's okay. Being the best school in the country would be okay, too. To be the fourth-best school in the state, and the best school for ELL kids and special ed kids, that would be something. And so that's what I'm really interested in, you know, in pursuing. I've ended up chairing the Development Committee because of my old day job, and I'm interested in, and we'll talk a little bit later about that, but I think trying to retool that for the new day, for where we are with the building and all that, and also for the really exciting stuff that we can, that we're gonna develop with alumni, and the kind of cultural philanthropy that we need to develop, if we are gonna be the best school for ELL and special ed kids achieving at the highest levels, and the third-best school in the country.
Just in case I haven't made it clear, there's room on the Education Committee.
Okay. Are there any questions for Chris?
No?
No.
Okay.
If not, I will entertain a motion to accept Chris for a second term.
So moved.
For July, that's July 1st, 2017, you weren't here at the last meeting, but, to June 30th, 2020.
Oh, he's
It's always scary to hear that out-year number.
Wait till you hear the other two out-year numbers. Any second?
I'll second.
Lucy, seconds? All in favor? Oh, you know what, sorry, I just realized, yes, Allison's on the phone, so we have to do it by roll call vote. All right, so Allison, start with you.
Yeah.
Tom?
Yes.
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 You don't get to vote.
Yeah.
Definitely, yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, that is unanimous.
Okay.
Why doesn't Chris get to vote? Just point of clarification.
He can't vote on his own.
I'm a trustee. Or maybe I'm not anymore. Or wasn't.
We weren't until we just said yes.
Okay. All right.
Now you can vote.
Next.
Okay. All right, next we have Liz Salt. And Liz is a former parent representative up until just recently here. A little bit of Liz's background, former HR professional, extensive experience in HR and also software consultant, over 20 years of professional services experience, responsible for leading large teams of HR professionals in the consulting space. In addition, she worked as an SAP consultant with Deloitte Siemens Business Systems. She served clients such as Bear, US Navy, HP, USGen, and numerous internal clients as well as spent more than 12 years with Deloitte's HR organization. So Liz has also been a strong contributor to our board over the last year or so and is looking to, again, for more punishment, rejoin our board. So Liz, I would ask if you want to say a few words?
Uh, no, actually.
Make a motion to elect Liz Salt, period July 27, 2017 to June 30, 2021.
Second?
Second.
Oh, Chris seconded that, okay. All in favor, do a roll call vote again. Allison?
Yes.
Tom?
Yes.
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 Definitely, yeah.
Yep.
Yes.
Yes, all right. Motion passes unanimously, Chris. Next.
And last but not least, we have Roger Jarrett, another former board member who I believe, Roger served about seven years on the board previously. Former governance chair, former, I believe, parent rep by trade, principal of software engineer, currently employed by MathWorks, and has been a very, very strong contributor to the board for many years and especially well steeped in a lot of the policies and principles of the, of the AMSA overall bylaws. So has been a wealth of knowledge and a resource for us, so.
And bus schedules.
Yes.
Well, that's true, he did do that. He was on that task force, yep.
And secretary.
And secretary too, yeah, that's right, that's right. So with Roger with that, if you'd like to say a few words on returning to the board here.
Wow, I am just so excited to see, starting with the school year where we're at now, than where we've gone through the last seven years, eight years, 10 years, even more. So this, this is a really exciting time for the school year. I view as that we've sort of hit that plateau and now we're ready to go up. As we've stabilized the school, it's in a great place, we're looking at leasing a building, we've got a fantastic ED, a leadership team in place, and we are ready to rock and roll. A little bit of background on myself, I have a rising senior in college, Scott, who graduated from AMSA. I have a rising senior here at AMSA. I have an incoming sixth grader, so I'm really excited to see the future of the school and contribute in however best way you can support. I've done many things and looking forward to helping out where I can.
Fantastic. Any questions for Roger?
So I'll make a motion to elect Roger Jarrett to position a trustee, period July 27th, excuse me, July 27, 2017 to June 30, 2021.
Second?
Have seconded? All in favor? Allison?
Yes.
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 Definitely, yes.
Yes.
Ken?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, all right, unanimous. Yay! Congratulations, this is great. Wonderful.
Want to come and join the table, Pauline?
Yeah, we can have you join the table. We didn't have them last time, but either, either one, either way, if you want to join the table.
Can I make one comment?
Yes.
So I, we don't have that large of an audience today, but I just wanted to recognize, I mean, being a member of the board, it's, for a lot of folks, it's a lot of personal sacrifice, a lot of work and, and, you know, off-hours, as they all have full-time jobs otherwise. And so for them to make that commitment again, it's a big deal. So I just want to recognize that, thank you. And personally, I've worked with all of you and I couldn't be happier that you're joining again. And I feel like we have, to your point, Roger, we have such a strong board, I believe, and a great administration in place. And I think the school is poised to just continue just this fantastic trajectory, so it's very exciting.
So Roger, 2021?
Yep.
And Liz's?
2021.
But Chris is 2021.
Chris is 2021.
Yeah, because Chris is July 1. Okay, well, thank you.
Liz, come back to the table.
Coming back to your seat.
You have name, place, don't you?
Can't give her a name, like she hasn't, it's not official yet.
You're right.
But we have them.
We have.
Yeah, we have them for next one.
It exists.
Right, we know it exists, we have it for next one. This is great. All right. So the first item on this under-chair business is that the Stem Soaring Eagles Foundation has a board of five people and there are currently two vacancies. So the Stem Soaring Eagles Foundation has met, the president of the foundation is actually Roger, the two other members are Tom Taverna and Craig Holbrook. They have met and would like to nominate Chris O'Keefe and Lisa O'Connor to join their board. And the way that their bylaws work, correct me if I'm wrong, we, that we, the AMSA board need to approve.
Correct.
Those members, right?
We've already voted to bring them on our board.
You guys have all voted.
The AMSA board needs to ratify them.
Okay. So any questions about either of them? If not, then I need a motion to accept the, I guess.
I make a motion to accept those two individuals to the Stem Soaring Eagles Foundation Board.
Okay, Tom, and a second?
I'll second.
Lucy? And in favor, Allison?
I think she was unmuting herself.
Let's go around with everybody else.
Yes. Rick, oh, I'm sorry, yes.
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 Yes. Yes.
Pauline, are you a yes?
I'm a yes.
All right.
I'm on mute.
Nice.
I'm on mute. 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 What'd you do, Rick?
I was gonna ask.
What happened? Magnetic personality.
So we received the family results, so I'll review those briefly. As people recall, we saw really outstanding results, particularly in the biggest concern areas in the faculty results. After we just do a brief review on the screen of the family results, we can maybe speak a little bit to the open response that we received for both of those surveys. And Chris helped a lot in verifying that we've redacted answers in there. And what we're going to do at the conclusion of today's meeting is get a link to both surveys up on the AMSA website as well as a copy of the redacted responses, so anybody can view them in detail. Is this where it, what, actually? Maybe just, hold on a second. Thank you. So I think it's, I'm sorry, your computer looks just like mine, but it acts, acts very differently. So I just want to say one thing at a very high level, these were the primary modules that were part of the survey. One that sticks out as being very low is family engagement. If folks look at the details of what the nature of family engagement questions, this historically is a, is very low in general, not to say we want to keep it low, but the nature of the questions are along the lines of how often does your, how often do you meet in person with teachers at your child's school? How involved have you been in the PTA, et cetera? So those are the nature of those questions. And so a lot of that has to do with proactive involvement by the parents. So a negative score, though we want it to be higher, isn't necessarily indicative of the fact that there's something explicitly wrong. So if we jump to one of the key ones I'd like to, especially from looking at how things went last year and just anecdotal, open form, open response questions, as well as the survey last year, school climate was a big concern and we can see that things are rising in that area, so that is a very positive thing. And again, folks can look at the specific questions if they wish, but as an overall theme, we're seeing.
Everything.
Positive trending in that area. It's not as dramatic as we've seen in, in the faculty survey in terms of climate, but we're definitely seeing, seeing improvement there. The other thing I would just highlight is safety, which is really critical, is rated as high. And school fit, which I think is also interesting to note, as we have a change, as we have a change in demographic, I think one concern would be, you know, are we continuing to sense that folks, we're sending their students to the school, feel that the school fits for them? And, you know, it's been level or, you know, maybe a point increase. So that, that I think is another key indicator that we should be monitoring. Aside from that, to be honest, I haven't had a chance to dig down in all the numbers. So what I would suggest, though, is we're going to put the link up and if folks can review them in detail and maybe we can then collaboratively speak about concern areas or positive areas.
Liz, be in the trustees tab on the website.
It's usually under the trustees tab, right?
I believe so, that's what we had last year. I'm looking at Sarah, I don't know if you recall offhand.
I think that's where we want it.
So if you send us an email when it's out, when it's up, click here. Yeah. So, so that'll become available. We also, as I mentioned, did have.
Could you go back down to the bottom of that one, just, I just wanted to see the...
This, this page?
No, to the, the, sorry, the wrap-up with all the scores.
Yep.
This one.
Yeah. You know, it's interesting, you know, last month, when we looked at this, we had 250 family member responses. Now, we have almost 400.
Yep.
And these numbers have stayed pretty consistent from that time.
Yep.
Interesting observation.
I think that they have lived in the minutes, in the, you know, you go to that, the meeting date. If you want to have it someplace else, it could be a both, it could have its own dedicated place if you'd like that. But I think that the survey results lived in whatever date your chair shares.
Okay. So, maybe we can talk about that offline in terms of how we might, oh, no, no, no.
We've, we've had it posted.
I'm sorry?
The results have been posted.
Yeah. So, I, I just want to make sure, as I recall, we had a specific area for survey results. And so, maybe what we might want to do is, now that we're getting a few, just make sure it's organized well, so that folks who want to get past survey results in current have an opportunity to do that. I think the really great thing is with everybody having the ability to have the link, that there are a lot of really great capabilities in this tool, if you start playing around with it in terms of comparing, you know, results to previous years, but also to benchmarks with other schools, as well as comparing how we do, not only against schools, but high schools versus middle schools versus other schools. And I think what you're going to find in general is, though we may fare well in comparison in many areas to schools in general, when you look at high schools in particular, we tend to fare extremely well, because just the dynamic of the way faculty, as well as parents, rate things starts to change in high school as opposed to earlier. So, I would, I would strongly urge everybody to take a look at that.
So, this link will become public to anyone, right?
To anybody, yeah.
Okay.
We, as I mentioned, we had a chance to get open response questions also. And I don't know, maybe if you'd like to speak to, Chris, you had a chance to do a brief review of them, if you have any themes you'd like to share on that, and then I can make a couple of comments.
So, it was interesting. So, I was the second reader, so I went through them very fast, kind of looking for proper nouns and whether they should be eliminated. But there was some, like, the speed read made me want to go back and really read it. But it did show me, I think, that, A, there's a dramatic change for the better, which is no surprise. That there are still a fair number of issues and complaints out there. But I had the feeling, as Lance was saying, "Oh, yeah, we could do something about that. Ah, maybe we can fix that." And maybe some not. But, you know, I think, instead of being overwhelmed, instead of needing everything to be perfect, the fact that we are identifying, encountering, and dealing with problems, I think is just a really, it really felt nice that this was manageable, that I felt like I could hear it, and said, "Oh, yeah, we could, we could address that." I did notice that the level of concern, awareness of the school culture was much higher among the faculty than the staff. And just, again, in flipping through it
Faculty than the parents, you mean?
The parents, right.
Yeah.
That a lot of, a lot of it didn't seem to matter very much to the parents, or wasn't very visible to them. You know, they're just, they're doing what they're doing, and they had their observations and some of their issues. But the angst level, or the relief level wasn't, the emotional energy level was not the same, which was interesting.
Yeah. I would concur very much with your observations. I think, going through the faculty survey, I think there was a great recognition of things that the new administration are doing, and that really stood out. To your point, Chris, there were certain items that were mentioned, but none of them are over, I didn't, I didn't perceive any of them as overwhelming, or there was an overwhelming theme of concern. I will share one comment that I think when looking at previous year's surveys, when there was concern over leadership, there certainly was at the higher administration level, and then also at the department head level. And there was a lot in previous year's surveys. In this year's survey, there was a lot of happiness at higher levels of leadership, ED, principal, et cetera. At the department head level, it seemed that there was a lot less negative comment than previous years. There were a few comments in that area. I think they were very limited. But when I think about that, I think about when we had previous surveys, we talked about the HR role and the potential role of that individual to help with management effectiveness, because oftentimes, people that assume leadership roles from teacher to another position don't necessarily get formal management training, et cetera. And so, I think there may be some opportunities. If you read, if you read the open response, it won't jump out at you, but if you read them in the context of previous years, I think there's something, a little, there's a little something there that we need to, to address. Aside from that, I think, again, overall, the comments were very positive. And again, this will all be made available to everyone. Any questions, folks have?
I have a quick, so, thank you. I know this takes time, by the way. And clearly, you're so invested in it. So, thanks. I wonder, so, it sounds like we might pick this up as one more, are we picking this up again as an agenda item, or are we?
I would suggest we do, after everybody's had a chance to review them, so that if they see particular items.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. And I'll ask, we've talked a little bit about
Actually, I could just add to that. Please. So, so that's one aspect. I think another aspect is, we had somebody from the administration who was going to play point on the administration side. So, I think, you know, having our perspective on it, and then the administration's perspective, or pour out kind of their perspective of the, the survey results would be helpful.
That's a good idea. So, I'll just pick up on that. So, we had talked one time about there's some best practice about actually setting our own targets
Yep.
around these, right? So, we can continue to feel really good about a 10-point lead, and we can look at how we're compared to other high schools. But for us, it might behoove us to come back in with some points to be that says, "Okay, what are the three ones that we want to work on next year?" And what is, you know, something aspirational that like, come back, we say, "Cheese, school's climate's graded 72. Let's go for 80 next year." And then we set something best, so we can have some type of a thing to judge against.
Yeah.
And we shouldn't do it for all of them, but pick like, three of them, I think. And that might be good.
Maybe if we take that as a formal assignment.
Yeah.
Our homework is to come back, prepare to recommend three that we should pay attention to.
Yeah.
Give us some focus in reading it.
It could.
Help us actually do it.
And I think aspirational is good, right? No need to sandbag on this, right? Pick something that you want to go after that's high, that could give focus around action planning. And maybe that's kind of something that we talk about.
Yeah. I think that's a great idea. And one thing I would mention is, I think when we think about that, we think about specific questions as opposed to these broad
Sure.
high-level ones, because the way the methodology creates these scores is not
Perfect. Yeah, it's a good suggestion.
So, when going through it, if you could look at specific questions, or maybe clusters of questions, I think that makes sense.
I, I would just, I would love to see, my initial response is that I'm really concerned about the family support.
No, yeah.
Fifty-four percent favorable.
Oh, sorry.
I'd like to see that at 100%.
Yeah.
Well, you'd like to see
So, again, I would just say
Look at the underlying question.
The terminology here is misleading. So, we're using an outside source. They, they use their standard terminology. And so, saying 16% favorable is in
Well, I'm thinking of family support, not engagement.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. Okay. Yeah. I, I hope, I really would love to dive into that a little bit more, and to figure out ways that we can help
People feel
feel our families that are supported in every, every way possible.
So, so, if you look at the questions that are involved
Yeah, they're a little weird.
You know, and not to go through them all, it's like, "How often do you help your child understand the content he or she is learning in school?"
Twenty-three is actually good, I mean. Well, I don't think you necessarily want to say that's good one way or the other, right? I mean.
Yeah.
Well, so, so, there's lots of reasons why that might be a 23.
Yeah.
Might be that parents are uncaring, or the parents might sit there and say, you know, "They're understanding it without my help, and I don't really need to do a whole lot."
Yeah, that's kind of a good thing.
Or your parents are saying, "I don't know how to help you. I can't do your homework."
And, and to that point, in, I know in certain schools, they want that number to be almost zero, because they want
Yeah, you may want it to be low.
Have the student be
The students own it.
Yeah, have the student own it, and the school be able to, the teachers to be able to understand where they're struggling, and to be able to help them and adjust accordingly.
We found consistently
It's a weird question.
Yeah, I'm glad that we're using
Right, it's not what you're doing, right?
I'm glad that we're using Panorama, but you really have to look at the questions in order to understand it. We found that consistently.
Yep.
And I almost, I almost think that before these get posted, as a general rule, there ought to be a report that goes along with it that helps somebody to sit there, because you look at this, and you say, "Oh, my God, family engagement is only at 16%. That's horrible." Well, maybe it's not horrible, you know, so.
And this scale is kind of weird, too, because you read the title, and you think it's about, is the school supporting families?
That's what I was
Yeah.
But the question's read like, are families supporting the school?
Or families supporting their own kids.
Students.
Or do they need to?
It's a little
Yeah, it's a very odd.
There
You really have to look at these questions.
Well, the problem is, is not only do we need to look at it, my fear is somebody looking at that first page would go, "These are horrible results."
Well, somebody that's only looking at the first page, I don't want to waste a lot of time addressing. So, if somebody wants to come back to me and talk to me about a detailed question down here, I think we can invest time in addressing that. But I don't, I don't think we need to spin summary.
That's why I always appreciate you. The dose of reality.
So, to that point, though, if folks do have some concerns like that, I was talking to Panorama about some of these concerns and so forth, and they, they said, "We can try to see what we can do and how we can adjust things." So, you know, in terms of some of this terminology and so forth. So, if you can provide some feedback, I can share it with them. I was really surprised, a few weeks ago, I spoke with them, and they walked through the results, and they were also showing what changed in the tool. I've rarely seen a company, actually, just to give them a little credit where it's due, improve a product so significantly over a year
Yeah.
based on feedback of users. So, they do listen. So, you know, I think we definitely want to provide feedback, to your point, on some of these things.
So, the, so I would not want to change the questions, because I think fundamentally, the questions are good. And, and also, when you change the question, you change the baseline of the results. My problem's not with the questions. My issue has more to do with how these things are rolled up. And I, I still think that I would prefer to see us, if, if they're not going to provide an explanation for this, for us to provide an interpretive explanation, helping people understand that this is what these numbers mean.
Actually, it's almost like the summary page is a problem.
Yes.
Summary page is a problem, but come to the next board meeting. We're going to talk about it.
Well, I'm just thinking, even like, even the family engagement one, the way their questions were, the reason that shows up low isn't that families don't care. It's that you ask a question like, "Are you in contact with the school once a week?" You know, well, most people are not.
And most people are not.
And if you are, that could
If you are, it's probably bad. Yeah, exactly.
Exactly.
So, it's a little weird
Yep.
the way they ask them. So, it's that summary page is really misleading.
Yeah, a question like that, you know, ultimately, a question like that would probably be better asked, "Do you feel comfortable calling the school if there's a problem?" You know, as opposed to, "Do you call, you know?"
Or does the school actively address concerns?
Yes, yeah, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Interesting.
Any, any other comments or questions? Okay, very good. Thanks.
So, it sounds good. So, Rick, you'll send these around, and let's come prepared to talk at the next meeting about a couple of them, right? A few, everyone should pick five questions, or that you really want to hone in on, and, and we can talk about how we want, what targets we would like to look at, and we'll ask the school to do the same. Okay, great. Actually, before we get to task force updates, I actually want to talk about creating a new task force, because we do need to, the survey results are one piece of this, but we do need to kick off our ED evaluation process. If you recall, last year, Board on Track had rolled out a new tool, which I think we liked, right? I mean, I, those of us that were on the task force working on it found it very helpful. So, Ken, Mike, and I were the task force last year. We took the summary results from the tool and rolled them up into a written document. And the tool went to all trustees, so all trustees filled it out, and it went all, to all of the ED's direct reports. So, and department chairs last year.
And then some, yeah.
Yeah, and, and department chairs, academic department chairs. That's what we had last year. But actually, the department chairs all report to you now, right? So, they actually, it would still be all direct reports. So, we probably can't do the school piece of it, since they aren't in school, until the very end of August, beginning of September. But we could do the trustee piece of it. If you recall, it was just that one, you know, it was the online thing. It took maybe 15, 20 minutes, depending on how much time you really wanted to put into that. Do you think that we could get that done by the August board meeting, if we rolled that out? Do you guys think so?
Being responded to.
Yeah, being responded to.
Answering a survey.
It's about three weeks, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So, I, why don't we start to roll that out? I would like to ask for volunteers for that task force, because, so sometime in September. So, it would be that we would, we'd have trustee results by the August board meeting, and then us direct report results by the September, or, you know, sometime in September. The September board meeting is actually really at the end of the month, and so, we probably had those results mid-September. And so, I need some people who would be willing to take a look at that and pull it all together, sort of with the family, with these survey results, and help to write a written document by the September board meeting. Anyone going to volunteer? Am I going to have to pick people?
I'll, I'll volunteer.
I was actually going to pick you.
I kind of saw you looking at me, so I had to get that one out.
If you weren't going to. The other person, if no one's going to volunteer, I'm going to ask Rick if you'd be willing to do this with me as well.
Sure.
Okay. So, I think for this year, this going forward year, we'll have it be me and Rick, unless Ken and Mike really want to do it.
Look, look at Rick in there.
Okay.
Thanks, Mike.
We'll loop you in on quality control if we need to.
We'll provide consulting.
If we can do that.
As needed, basically.
Okay, that's great. Okay, thank you.
We did the dirty work.
So, then, with the task force updates, collective bargaining is Allison and Mike, but that is, we'll talk about in executive session. Regional issues, is starting, think?
So, regional issues goes pumping along here. So, I actually pulled out my notes and started writing, so progress has been made. And that's all I have to report. Want a better report, get a better leadership.
Okay. And then facilities, I just want to say publicly, you know, we do have a very active facilities task force. We've got people who are working on the litigation piece, people working on new building acquisition piece, financing piece, as well as communication. So, just, it is very active discussion with many conversations that happen on, on a daily basis. We will talk about all the decision-making that we need to do in executive session, but it is a very active task force, yeah.
You said financing, condition, right, so the last
Communications.
Communications.
Communications, yeah. So, those are sort of like the four sub-task forces of the facilities task force. Okay? All right. So, finance and audit committee update.
Okay. So, we've not been together for a little while here. So, we're going to talk about monthly results for May and June, which takes us to the end of our fiscal year, July 1, 2016, through June 30, 2017. So, we'll talk about May and June, and then we'll talk about where we ended the entire year. So, we received our final tuition payment and our final tuition adjustment, and we received some additional money that we had not been expecting, which was certainly pleasantly received. For the year, our tuition came in at $834,000 more than we had budgeted. Again, there are a host of factors that go into the way our tuition is calculated. It's based on the sending districts. It's based on how much the sending districts are spending on their students. We make our best estimate when we put the budget together, and then it gets trued up three times throughout the year. And this is where we ended up, you know, for the year.
I'm sorry, Tom, the actual, the first actual to budget column is just for the two months.
Correct.
And the other side of the blue line is for the year as a whole.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Final comment on tuition. We have had years where it's gone the other way, so we always like it when it goes this way. So, that is tuition. Next line is grants and donations. And so, the annual giving campaign did wrap up. We raised a total of 28,000 in the months of May and June, bringing the grand total of 32,000 for the annual giving campaign. And then the balance of grants is related to special ed grants and things like that. For the year, we had budgeted 204,000. We came in at 200,000, so very close on the grants and donations. And I think Chris is going to talk about the annual giving campaign in a little bit here. Miscellaneous income is interest on our cash principally. Came in favorably. Again, we're not talking about huge numbers there, but it did come in favorably, so we like that. Food services, this is the money that we receive for the lunches. We've been talking about this all year, that that's been coming in at a lower rate. It actually came in over budget for the months of May and June. June, we weren't budgeting a whole heck of a lot. There's not that many days in the month and things like that. But consistent with what we have seen throughout the year, the income came in at about 80% of what we've been forecasting through the whole year. You will see an expense line item down below that has a corresponding, actually, we came in at about 85% of what we thought the expense was going to be. So, those numbers were tracking to, to each other really closely there. Next line item is student programs. We had a lot of testing come in that we had been expecting in the April budget, but didn't actually come in until May. So, you'll see that for May and June, we're up. What you'll see is, for the entire year, we were right on with what we were budgeting from a student programs standpoint. So, good job to Leanna on that one. Athletic programs, again, we had a timing issue about when we were collecting the revenue. The bottom line for the whole year, we collected less from athletic programs than we'd been anticipating. We had many fewer track students, or participants or athletes than we had been expecting. We had a lot fewer wrestling folks as well. That was what was driving the athletic programs number being down there. So, this is strictly based on what we receive per pupil. Student transportation, this is the money that we receive in for the regional buses. That money has essentially been collected for the entire year, much earlier in the year, so not a lot of activity going on there, just a little bit of cleanup. And we were right at what we were expecting to be, you know, be taking in there. Okay, salaries. Salaries versus budget and things like that, and then salaries versus the years. As an explanation, the teachers work, well, the teachers are compensated for the calendar year, July 1 through June 30. That's the year that they're compensated on. They get paid into the following fiscal year, so you make accrual at the end of the year for it. So, you're always going to see a large payroll number in the June period, because it's related to their compensation for the previous school year. That doesn't get paid out until the following year. For the full year, what we want to focus in on is where we came in. We came in about 300,000 under what we've been forecasting, or what we've been budgeting, and that was consistent with what we've been forecasting for, you know, probably the last six months there, related to unfilled positions is what's driving that. Payroll taxes and fringe benefits, the two drivers of that, payroll taxes obviously correlates directly to the salary number that's coming in, and then fringe benefits correlates to how many people actually are taking this up on medical and things like that. That number's been very That number had been very consistent throughout the year as well. Another number here, professional development. This number came in much less than we budgeted, there were two big drivers to that. First big driver was a character development program that had been budgeted for that we chose not to run this year. The other major driver that is in this number relates to tuition reimbursement and we had in the budget, I wanna say $30,000 for tuition reimbursement and we actually only had the faculty take us up on 5,000 of the 30,000 that was available. So those are the two principal drivers that have come down from there. I think if you remember the budget discussion that we had the last time, we've actually moved this number up and Dr. Lewis has big plans for professional development in the coming year and we'd be very excited to spend, you know, that money appropriately and you talked about it in here as well. I'd just point out, as a big Avengers fan, there were four of them, you could've called them the PD Fantastic Four. We could, you know, pull some other names in there, but something to think about. Instructional supplies and equipment, gear and surge, we came in right on what we were expecting for professional supplies and equipment, you know, real close there, within $5,000, you know, dollars, that was 98% of what we were looking at. Student program expenses came in 18,000 under what they were last year, that is principally attributable to lower graduation costs, so we made some changes to the graduation program this year over last year and that is almost one to one what is represented there. Food services, we mentioned before, so this is the expense associated with food services. You saw that our income came in at about 80% of what we were budgeting, our expenses came in at about 85% of what we were budgeting. You'd like to see if the income's down, that the expenses are down and for the most part they was tracked to each other. Athletic expenses, so we pay coaches two ways. Coaches that are AMSA employees, their coaching stipends flow through the stipend line item. For non-AMSA people that are coaches, their coaching stipends actually flow through the athletics line item. And we ended up having more non-AMSA coaches this year than we have been anticipating and we pay those stipends out in the spring here, so that's why you see that number there. When you come over to here, that has a corresponding effect, there are two things that drove the athletic cost being higher. Again, more stipends flowing through here and we spent more on fore kicks than we had been anticipating. Student transportation.
Tom, could you give just a little clarification? So you said that the stipend, if it's an AMSA teacher who's coaching, it shows up in the salary line item?
Correct.
But it's not called out separately?
It's not called out separately. So you will remember that we have presented an athletics breakdown where we have all of the athletic expenses and all of the athletics costs. We pull those out for that analysis, but for the P and L line items, those expenses flow through the salary line item is where they flow through.
And you've made the point before that we subsidize athletics pretty heavily.
We do and we will have a final analysis of all of the athletic expenses. So athletic expenses are in the salary line item, athletic expenses are in the athletics line item and athletic expenses are in the next line item below student transportation. We will pull all of those out and complete our analysis on the expenses versus the income that we get in. The income is very easy, the income is strictly what parents pay per student coming in, so that part of the analysis is easy. The expense analysis part of it is a little higher and if we wanna talk about that at a future point, we can, you know, we can revisit that and we'll have that information of that.
And I'd encourage the board to take a look at that because this is, I mean, this is a pretty substantial subsidy and I don't have an issue with that, but I think the board ought to be conscious of the subsidy that is being made for athletics.
So again, when we did the budget, you know, when we did the budget discussion, we looked at last year's actuals, we looked at what we were projecting for this year and quite frankly, it's gonna be a little bit worse than what we were projecting and we looked at obviously what we were budgeting for this coming year and what the subsidy related to that would be. We could certainly revisit two years of actuals and what we're budgeting for this year if that's something that we wanna look at at some point in the future.
Yeah, I mean, just doing the, and this doesn't include the stipends or the busing or anything like that, but it ended up being 60, 60,000 more?
It's a lot more than that.
Yeah, yeah.
It's a lot more than that, so.
Again, I think that's something.
I would agree, pulling it out and talking about it on the record for some period of time because it's such a, it's been such an issue in the past, you know, the question of, are we supportive of athletics?
Yeah, and so I would, you know, I would.
We can answer that graphically and definitively.
I think we can answer that graphically and definitively. I'm happy to talk about that at our next meeting. I'm also happy to, let's, you know, defer that until the next time we're putting a budget together and we want, you know, we wanna look at it there, so whatever, whatever people are interested in from a visibility standpoint on that one.
Yeah, and in the past, Tom, you did send me that breakdown because it is a point of contention with parents in terms of the cost, but once they realize that the school is subsidizing so heavily, I think it's important for the, for all of us to be able to speak to that.
So maybe it does make sense to have it?
Jill should have that too.
Yeah.
I already, I already told her, she's, we need to discuss that.
So there's two questions here. One, the, you know, to what extent is the board subsidizing it so that people understand that it is being subsidized and so although athletic fees are where they are and they're not low, they're not as high as they could be or should be if you were doing a zero impact on the athletic fee. The second question, and that's the one I was proposing to the board, is consciously understanding that we are taking money out of the classroom, put out on the athletic field. Again, I'm not saying it's a bad thing, I'm just saying we ought to be doing that consciously with an awareness of the fact that we're doing that.
Again, I think, I think that is excellent points and I think it should filter into our strategic planning that we're doing and, you know, what we define what we want the school to be at the end of the day.
So I think since you have the numbers, I mean, we can pull the numbers, we have the year-end numbers, it maybe does make sense to talk about it in August because it's before school starts, just so the numbers are right there at the fingertips, right?
And Tom, is there any other, are there other cases where we're subsidizing? There, and kind of, when you do have the summary figures, it might be just useful to compare that, the subsidy to other subsidies at a very high level?
Yeah. Philosophically, there aren't other places that we are subsidizing. So student programs in general are self-funding, clubs are self-funding, you know, extracurricular activities are essentially self-funding with the, with the exception of athletics, so it's a place that, you know, that we've done it. The prom, the prom does have a subsidy, you know, at this point, you know, at this point in time, the prom has a subsidy. But essentially everything else is priced to be self-funding.
I gotta be thinking the prom subsidy is pretty low?
The prom subsidy, the prom subsidy as a percentage is actually reasonably high. The prom subsidy in terms of absolute dollars is, you know, is a trivial number compared to the, you know, the athletics subsidy.
Yeah, that's why, my point is, we're, you know, write it on this, it's 291,000 and as Tom points out, that doesn't include everything. So that's in pure dollars, that's a, that's, that's a heavy subsidy.
To let the record show, Tom is not saying we should cut athletics, Tom is saying, I would be happy to provide the numbers to have a discussion, an informed discussion around that.
Let the record note that it was I that brought that up.
Okay. Student transportation, again, to point here, student transportation is field trips, student transportation is regional buses, student transportation is athletic buses is what goes into the student transportation line item. We did a good job of zero-based budgeting on that one, came really close on that one as well. Okay? Next line item, so obviously salaries is our biggest expense, next biggest expense, you know, really is our facility is the next biggest expense. Facility came in a little bit under what we were expecting. Cam charges came in a little under, property taxes came in a little lower. If you net those two differences out, it comes to the 90K variance that we experienced on our facilities.
Property taxes went higher.
Property taxes went higher and cam came down. The net of those two is, I think, 89,000 and we were off by 90,000 in what we were projecting, so that explains that entire variance there. So we have a, you know, we have a rent schedule that adjusts year by year, a steady rent schedule. Property taxes are impacted by what the town is, city is charging our landlord and cam charges are impacted by the facilities maintenance that our landlord does and then passes on to us, so those, those two are variable. The rent is, you know, is pretty static.
So I was gonna ask why we pay taxes but we don't, the landlord does?
Because we negotiated a bad lease.
And we agreed to pay his property taxes?
We did.
That was nice of us.
Yep.
Very nice.
Facilities relates to, you know, repairs that we do, janitorial services and things like that that we do. We were a little bit off on our projection for this one. One of the things that we had not budgeted for was the day porter, that's essentially janitorial services in the middle of the day. We had not budgeted for that last year. We did budget for that 20K in this coming year, so we don't make the same mistake twice. We'll find new mistakes to make, but we don't make the same mistake twice. And we also had some increased repairs and maintenance. Utility expenses, you know, we came pretty close there. IT, IT was higher than what we had been expecting for the year because we had less salary coming through, so we had an IT position that was vacant that we were filling with a consultant was what was driving principally the higher IT costs that you see there. Our auditor was right in line with what we were expecting. Legal, in case you weren't keeping up with current events, we did have a trial. Trial costs did exceed what we were expecting the trial cost to exceed. From a timing standpoint, we had expected the trial to actually occur in August of last year, didn't happen until April of this year. We really got the final bills in for the trial at this point in time. We also have the final insurance settlement in related to the trial at this point in time, so this is what our legal costs are. We expect to continue to have legal costs associated with our facility situation going forward, but at a much, much lower rate and we've budgeted for a much, much lower rate than what you see here, but obviously that was 130,000 over what we had been expecting.
So are the legal numbers net of the insurance?
The legal numbers are net of the insurance rebate, yes, a rebate or reimbursement, not rebate. The reimbursement flows through here and there is no more reimbursement from the insurance to come for any additional legal fees, unless something new comes up that we're not anticipating at this point in time.
This is also all legal, it's not just the litigation.
Right, so there's, you know, regular course of, you know, business legal, there's personnel legal issues. As we move into collective bargaining, there's additional legal costs associated with that in this coming year, which we contemplated in the budget. Those were not in this last year's budget because we had a two-year contract, so we did not have collective bargaining legal costs in the fiscal year that just ended. We will have those costs in the coming year there. Other operating expenses, again, this is a pretty low number here. It was a little bit higher than what we had been anticipating. We did have a temp nurse at the beginning of the year, which drove the principal variance that you see there. And then depreciation expenses, we just had some more fixed assets on the books than what we were anticipating. Bottom line, for the year, okay? I don't have my laser pointer, but this 259,000 number, we were forecasting a loss for the year of 259,000. We actually have a surplus for the year of 880,000. That's a 1.1 million dollar difference between what we were forecasting and what we actually took in. If you go back to the numbers that we had before, you take 800,000 more in tuition on the income side, you take 300,000 less on the salary side, you get to the 1.1 million differences is where that flows through from at that point in time. You'll see that we had large losses for, you know, for the month of May and June. Again, those are expected because of the year-end accruals that we do and things like that, but people need to understand there are months where we, you know, outlay more cash than we expect to outlay. So we added 880,000. It's not all cash because some of this relates to depreciation and other things, but essentially we added 800,000, 880,000 to the school surplus, so it was a good year. That's the financials at this point in time and then we have, I'm not sure whether we should be presenting it or governance should be presenting it, but.
No, you need to present it.
We will bring up a policy document here that we are proposing to add in. So this is a little bit of background on financial assistance. So the school has historically provided financial assistance to people that are on free and reduced lunches. Historically, we have not differentiated in how we have provided assistance, so we treated reduced lunch people the same way we treated free lunch people. Essentially, we subsidize their regional transportation, we subsidize their meals, we subsidize their academic field trips at 100%. We are now proposing that we formalize the financial assistance program and we do have some differentiation between folks that are on a free lunch and on a reduced lunch at this point in time. We're proposing to add this to, you know, to the handbook. The first thing that we're adding in here, you know, formally, is a uniform subsidy and the, we'll be providing that in the term, in the form of a Land Zen gift card and this basically equates to one school uniform and one PE uniform. This is the cost on Land Zen for one of each of those is rounding, 150 dollars is what the cost associated with that is and we're proposing that we would provide that to both folks on free and reduced lunch. Regional transportation, we are proposing that we would continue to fund at 100% for both students on free and reduced lunches. The meals, we're proposing we would be in compliance with the federal guidelines around free and reduced lunches, so free lunches are obviously just that free, reduced lunches would bear a cost of 40 cents would be the cost associated with the reduced lunch. On the academic field trips, we're proposing that we would continue to subsidize at 100% the cost of academic field trips for both free and reduced lunches. The senior class trip, we would not be subsidizing for folks on either free or reduced lunches. As it relates to athletics, it would be 100% scholarship for folks on free lunch, a 50% scholarship for folks on reduced lunch. We do think, you know, athletics are important, we do think extracurriculars are important, we also think that the school's primary mission, you know, is education and so we're trying to go where we can go. And on clubs, it'd be 100% for folks on free and 50% scholarship for folks on reduced lunches. And then when it comes to college board exams and things like that, we have typically been very accommodative, but we're suggesting you continue to work with your guidance counselor on the assistance that you need there, so.
So in the past also, right, I recall and if you could remind me if I'm doing this wrong, I think that regional transportation and the meals, we always were very consistent and the rest was sort of case by case, so if someone raised the issue.
Yes.
This is really trying to formalize the whole thing.
This is trying to codify it, yeah.
And Tom, if I can ask, so you mentioned the 40 cents per lunch versus free for meals, that's based on federal guidelines?
Yep.
In terms of the other percentages, like 50% versus 100% for clubs or athletics, is there some guidance or source of guidance for that or is it just kind of?
There really, there really isn't any source of guidance and we've seen other places all, you know, all over the place. So we try, you know, we tried to arrive at what we thought was, you know, was a reasonable position, but, you know, well, school, you know, school's trying to arrive at what they think is a reasonable position and wants to put a statement out there so that there isn't any confusion on, you know, how people are gonna be supported on a go-for basis and we frankly know what, you know, what they're gonna be getting themselves into when, you know, when they choose to send their students to the school. I think, and if we look at academics as the primary mission, I think we're trying to make sure that people can comply with our uniform code, we're trying to get people, you know, here, if they're fortunate enough to, you know, win the lottery and be here, we want, you know, we want them to be here. Lunches, everybody, everybody, nobody should be going hungry, I think that goes without saying. And then academic field trips, we think is part of the core mission and we wanna be, you know, not having any reason that people aren't able to participate in academic field trips. We think athletics and clubs are important, but there's, you know, there's gotta, there's gotta be a line, you know, a line somewhere and this is the line that, you know, that we're proposing at this point in time, but we're open to, you know, dialogue on it.
So I think Rick's point is there's no guideline in those areas.
Certainly nothing from the federal government and there's not, you know, nothing consistently seen, you know, anywhere else as to.
Well, there were some benchmarks, I mean, Leanna looked at.
You wanna talk about budget being a statement of your values. So I, I think we need to pay attention to these numbers and a lot of them I think are very good. I would question, and I'm not expert in this, so I'd need to do a lot, do some homework, but athletics and clubs make a difference with kids getting into college. So that's disadvantaging some poor kids in that area if this is. So, that's disadvantaging some poor kids in that area if this is going to make the difference between them doing it or not doing it. And I'm not, if I had the percentage of area median income or the percentage of federal poverty that drives the free lunch and reduced lunch, I could speak more knowledgeably if I had those numbers in my head, but I don't. But, I think those things do make a difference. And what we're saying is, we don't think it's as important for poor kids, well, for pretty poor kids versus very poor kids, to have those advantages which do pertain to getting into college, getting scholarships in college, et cetera.
No, I think we're sitting here saying, we do feel that it's important. And it's on a sliding scale, just like free versus reduced lunches are on a sliding scale. I mean, using your logic, you'd sit there and say at past a certain point, all lunches ought to be free. And there is a sliding scale in the free versus reduced.
Yeah, I hear you. I think we ought to look at that and make sure, that's logical, that makes sense. Is it where we want to be? If we really want to be the place where kids from all backgrounds really make it? Are we doing enough?
I'm sorry, Rick.
So, what do you say to somebody who doesn't qualify for reduced lunch, doesn't qualify for reduced lunch for whatever reason, but it isn't able to participate financially? We're going to sit there and say, well, geez, sorry, you didn't make the cut, so it's not important for you?
No, that's not the problem I'm trying to solve, Rick.
Well, that's the problem that you're saying. You're saying that someone who is disadvantaged financially, that reaches the reduced lunch, you're sitting here saying only doing 50%. You know, I guess my reaction to this is that it makes sense to use the sliding scale. I guess the one thing I would say is, you know, maybe you're advocating for the addition of a statement that says, if you are unable to participate for some reason, then certainly come see your guidance counselor or whomever it is that they're supposed to go see on these things.
Oh, actually, your idea about the sliding scale, I didn't think of. But, if you had a sliding scale that went above the reduced lunch threshold, that would be.
I'm sorry, I don't understand what you mean by that.
You're saying 150% of whatever.
That's right. That's right. So, if subsidies were available for kids at higher incomes, but on a sliding scale, if you started with area median income or whatever you want to use, you talking about a sliding scale?
I'm saying it already has a sliding scale.
And I'm talking about kids who are above the reduced lunch level, having some assistance available to them. If it does create a financial hardship.
I mean, at that point.
For them to do these things.
We're already going above and beyond what the public school would be doing.
What benchmarks?
Yes, but we're going above and beyond what we think we should be doing. And we think is right for us to do.
I hear you on that. What I would also point out on athletics and clubs, so again, I do appreciate.
That's what I signed up against.
I do appreciate what you're saying there. On athletics and clubs, I believe that there are other opportunities to participate in athletics and clubs outside of the school as well, right? So, there are town athletics, and there certainly are club organizations that people can participate in their towns. And so, I think there are other avenues open to people. So, this is a starting point. I think the school's put together a really good starting point. And I'd advocate for us formally adopting it. But, I'm willing to hear other folks' point of view on this at this point in time.
So, I think you bring up an excellent point. Chris, especially if you look at athletics and clubs as part of preparing students for college. And, I mean, I can see the argument, I can fairly see the argument that those should be at 100%. I do understand your point that, yes, but now what about beyond that line? I'm not going to address that. But.
I mean, I would be actually supportive of saying 100%. Because for these families, if you take a step back, right, federal guidelines say 40 cents per lunch or free for free lunch. So, these folks are already strained. This now puts a disproportionate strain on them. From federal, I don't know if I'll explain this well, I had very little sleep last night. But, from a federal guidelines perspective, that's quite a bit for them to be doing. But, the federal government believes they can do that much. But, they don't care about them being able to go beyond that, right? And this is extra money they're dipping into to make their kids ready. And to your point earlier, I mean, what's our mission? Should we not be helping and making it as possible as, doing everything we can possibly and reasonably? And so, in the context of reasonableness, I think it might be worthwhile to understand what the dollar amount is even here.
So, I would point out the fact that these dollars do not appear from just anywhere. These dollars are taken out of the classroom in order to fund this. In other words, this is the budget. So, you're making a decision to provide a scholarship for athletics versus what you would put into the classroom, right?
So, the amount matters.
I'm sorry?
It comes from somewhere.
The amount matters.
Well, the amounts, I think, right now are small. I think a concern is that this is setting a precedent. It's going to be harder to go the other way. It's easier to increase if it turns out to be an issue over the years. But, you can't start at 100% and then three years from now try to cut it back. I think that's what's harder to do.
If this is truly a hardship for someone, I would like to see a statement made that, you know, if this is really a hardship, then fine, come to the executive director or whoever it is that, you know, guidance counselor or whomever we're wanting the parent to come to, to sit there and say, look, this is, you know, this is a challenge for us.
Again, I would say that that could be a vehicle that the PTO could get involved in in places like that as well, right? So, the PTO does fundraising. This, I think, would be a great place for, you know, if the PTO wanted to get involved in something like this, to fill in some of these gaps.
So, could I ask, is it possible to get a sense of a few numbers? So, one is, based on today's demographics and numbers, what would that difference be?
So, today, we have about 30 kids that are on free lunch, and we have about 15 kids that are on reduced lunch. And if you look at how we compare to other districts, you're going to see right now we are substantially below what our sending districts are at this point in time. Those are the numbers that we're talking about. In terms of absolute dollars, we can get the absolute dollars. These are not huge absolute dollars, but they're not huge absolute dollars today. I don't know what they're going to be tomorrow. But, it's also about, we need to have a consistent policy as opposed to an ad hoc policy. So.
This is also more than what they were getting because the uniform thing is new. That's an add.
And I think the other question would be to the point of, as a demographic shift, if this was, you know, what would the approximate number of free lunches be if we matched our core districts? Not, we don't need to do it exactly, but just roundabout. And reduced lunch, like what would that dollar amount be? Does that become really significant and then really have a big impact or not? Because this has a big impact on those individual families. It may not have a big impact when you look at it in aggregate and the overall budget. So, I think it's just worth knowing those numbers and then making the right decision.
The thing that I think about, to Chris's point, when I think about clubs and college preparation, clubs give you the opportunity to show leadership. And even though there may be opportunities outside of the school environment, certainly the school presents, I think, probably more of an abundance of opportunities because of the variety of clubs that we may have. And that's something that colleges look at, you know. Are you president, vice president, your leadership capability? So, it's a key one. And to your point, you don't want to start off putting kids in a disadvantaged position because of funding. And the other thing I think about too, I mean, right now, we've got two points. You know, it goes back to the dollars, 50% and 100% back to the sliding scale. Is there somewhere in between there that might also be, you know, lessen burdensome on our overall budget, make us feel better about what we're doing for those kids who are financially challenged?
I think that's a hard thing to do. I mean, just to think about, like, how do you, then you put the school in a precarious position of having to judge this. This is very specific federal guidelines, a federal application, federal way of doing it, right? It's a very standard. How are you going to put someone in the school in the position of, oh, well, my dad lost his job and da-da-da? Like, then you're putting the schools, like, to adjudicate on each one of those is a very tough situation.
I'm sorry, but maybe you misunderstood because I didn't think you were speaking to that.
No, I wasn't. I was just going back to where we were talking here. It's 50% scholarship. So, I was looking at, back to Chris's point, should that not be 100% for the reduced lunch?
I thought you were talking about beyond that.
No, and then I was just saying between the 100 and the 50%, you know, possibly a 75%. I don't know if that, to your point, is out of federal guideline. But, just something that is more reflective potentially, to Chris's point of, you know, where is it that we want to be and reflective of as a school?
I'd argue a lot of the clubs do have a connection to academics. So, that point that was raised earlier about us focusing on academics first, I think paying more for clubs would, in fact, support that mission of ours. And even with athletics, I mean, we are having students who are, we had our first one this year who got recruited by Brian, I think it was. And that's, you know, she proved herself through her athletics, rather, and is having an opportunity to pursue good academics as well. So, I could see both of those in favor of paying more for athletics and clubs.
I think the only thing I want to add to that, I tend to be on this side of subsidizing. But, I, part of the club thing for me is, you know, we're in four core towns, right? And so, when I think about clubs and athletics, I see that as an opportunity for these students who live in remote locations. You're in Maynard, you're going to be engaging and participating with your students from other towns. And so, I think the more we can do to encourage that, I think, the better. But, I think it's a tremendous suggestion, Rick, to let's get into the numbers. And it's really not a material amount of money, even though I know there's a draw against the academics, I'd be much more inclined to support that, I guess.
We should also understand the reduced and free lunch numbers because I think for most of us would be surprised at how hard a reduced lunch, a family living on what qualifies for reduced lunch is struggling. I mean, that family, I don't have it in my head, but.
It's a very low number.
The family income is a lot lower than many of us would tend to suspect. And you're amazed that people can pay the rent when you look at those numbers. It'll be good to have that in front of us as well. So, who are we talking about?
Okay, we can bring that back.
Roger?
Yeah, I'm in a close place to Chris and Michael. I think that understanding what the numbers actually are about the family income requirements for free and reduced lunch, I think they are pretty scary low to qualify. So, if there are things that we can do to help, but maybe I'll even throw something out to say 90%. Reduced lunch, you will need to put some of their own pocket money into it to say, I really want to do this, but not make it 100% to show some difference. I like, I do like the, I think it's a great service to the school to have a standard form for this so that we don't have to make decisions on the fly. So, I think that's really, really good. Finally, I'd like to see, I think, I don't know if it was Rick or someone I mentioned earlier, to have a rider clause that the, giving the administration some flexibility to appeal to Dr. Lewis or somebody to say, and an out clause to say, you know, something drastically happened badly in my family in this year. I didn't qualify, but everything went wrong, and I really, really want to take advantage of some of this, to give some override ability.
I don't know. I think that puts too much responsibility on the executive director. Because I think that could end up putting him in a situation where he's having to make these decisions. I think if something like that were to come up.
I'd always say yes. It might be better just to go to 100% on everything.
Might be an idea to do like a fundraiser, again, like a PTO fundraiser for like a student like that that had a situation.
Yeah, maybe that's it, that they could, the students could appeal to the PTO. The PTO could raise a bucket of money for.
Just for slush, for this sort of situation.
For those types of.
For this situation.
They would raise a bucket of money to the executive director, his discretion, because you wouldn't want the PTO fundraiser so Johnny can play.
No, it wouldn't be for Johnny, but it would be for, you know, a bucket of people who may have a circumstance.
So, Roger, I apologize. I'm embarrassed that I don't know more about this. The Soaring Eagles Foundation, is that a resource for this kind of scholarship money?
I don't view it as that. The primary vehicle of the Soaring Eagles Foundation is the ability to hold property. And personally, I view it as sort of the level above the development committee here.
Okay.
Is a vehicle to receive donations from large corporations that have to give to a 501(c)(3).
Okay.
Sort of the opposite direction for the PTO.
But, I do think it's great that we have it. That's making a statement that's important to us. I think we should put a revision date on it and look at it every year.
Well, I think that we ought to subsidize regional transportation for everybody. Maybe we ought to have an activity bus taking people out after the clubs and so forth. That would certainly increase.
These are discussion stuff, yeah.
Make your argument.
Okay. Maybe athletics and clubs. I mean, we just subsidize everything. And everybody can participate then.
If you've got an argument to make, make it.
Well, I think that, you know, someone who lives out in Maynard or Clinton, perhaps not Hudson so much because it's right next door, but somebody who lives in Clinton or Maynard, it's very tough, it's very expensive in order to have your kid participate in after-school activities, okay? And so, you know, I might not be on reduced lunches, but I'm still having a tough time getting my kid into a uniform, into a school bus, into clubs, and so forth.
That would be the argument for a sliding scale with a higher ceiling. I'm good with that.
Let's take a look at the numbers.
The numbers right now, I love.
Yeah, so, let's look at those numbers. Let's put it against kind of what the rest of the world's happening, the rest of the world, and take a look at that model and see if this is kind of what we can bear.
I just think sometimes we forget how expensive it is for people outside of Marlboro to participate in the AMSA community.
Chris made a passion plea earlier about really thinking about what we want the school to be and what we want to be about. And this may be part of going to AMSA is that you have a board and money that's put aside to just drive engagement and participation and easy, you know. So, but I think the numbers have to tell. I think it's a great point. Just model this up on a couple of different things and model up buses, whatever else we want to do, and see what we're talking about.
Yeah, and I think it all works if you can affect the amount of revenue that the school brings. But, the amount of revenue that the school brings in is limited, and we need to be very careful about how it's spent.
We could use the annual giving campaign to focus on creating a fund to subsidize, you know, people that are on free and reduced lunches.
I think it's a great, another great option.
Yeah.
Let's put that on the agenda for next. Time to talk, get some numbers in and see what we.
Yeah.
I think that was a great suggestion, too.
Okay, that will call on the agenda for next one.
That's what I got.
Okay.
Thank you, Tom.
Thanks, Tom.
For this year and your hard work.
Thank you very much.
Okay, Ed Committee.
Ed Committee, we're meeting, we did not meet during July. We're meeting on August 10th. And that's my report.
You're way under your 10 minutes.
Oh, I'm having to make up time for all this financing audit overage.
Okay, Chris Development.
To Development. Tom, what was the number that you showed for the annual giving campaign?
32,000 was the final number for the annual giving campaign.
Well, that's way better than the number I was told. So, if you could take out that sheet and change the number at the bottom. I just asked for a report from staff last week and got the $17,000. So, I got the wrong number.
I made a $16,000 donation.
Thank you, Ken.
We appreciate it. So, that is, in fact, great news because that means that the campaign didn't, you know, so it reversed the downward trend. And, you know, again, got us going back in a positive direction, which is really good news. I do think that we need to do a reset on the Development Committee, is that.
Was it really only 119 donors then? So, maybe this number isn't quite right.
I don't think that number, I think there were more donors.
Yeah, it sounded like it was, I thought there were more.
Yeah, I don't have the donor number. I just have the dollar number. I would assume, you know, I'd do the math on it and guess that the average gift was probably the same. So, if you do 32 by 150, you're going to get to 200 people.
So, these numbers are somewhat suspect. But, I do think that, you know, we've been. But I do think that, you know, we've been, in terms of the annual campaign, I mean, we've kind of been doing what we've been doing, and I'm glad to see it turned around some, but it was drifting downward. And I would like to dissolve and reform the Development Committee with a clearer mandate from the board. I think what we do is, the volunteers who are on the Development Committee are great. Kind of, you know, some people who just happened by and, you know, and agreed that they would help out, but I think we need to make some decisions about, who do we want on it from the board, what do we want from it?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's good that we've got a budget number, and we need to take that seriously, and that's something that we can shoot for. I think we probably need some kind of consultation about, like, how do you get started? I'm not expert in that in terms of developing a philanthropy program, developing a culture of philanthropy. I think we gotta decide what kind of resources we're gonna put into it, 'cause on the staff side...
Yeah.
You know, I think we've had, Maureen's been great, it feels like it's very kind of just tacked on to, you know, other things that she does, and she does what she can, and has done it for several years. Mike has been very helpful this year, he's written some brilliant letters, and look at how much extra money they raised, Mike. You know, so, but I, I think we really need to, you know, kind of, what do we wanna do? And it goes right to, you know, do we wanna be in a position to subsidize? Do we wanna be paying post-competitive salaries? Do we wanna be relying on philanthropy for more than just the forty thousand dollars a year? And then how do we staff that, both from a board point of view and from a school point of view? So...
So, I mean, this, this reflects, you know, annual giving. I think what, what this doesn't reflect, and I really think is a missed opportunity, is, is corporate donations.
Absolutely.
And I think if we ran a similar list, I, I think it's an even, an even uglier tale, frankly. So, I think we used to receive a, a lot more in corporate contributions and in-kind contributions, and, you know, we, we need to reinvigorate our seeking of, of those funds is really what, you know, what we need to do. And I think that can make a real difference.
Yeah.
I think parents should be motivated to give a little extra to a school that's doing right by them, and I'm disappointed by the, you know, participation rates and the contributions, but I, I think where we really can make a difference is on the corporate side, if we can focus in on that, telling people what a wonderful job we're doing, and them wanting to have their name associated with a school that's doing really great things.
Yeah. And I think that also goes, that's creating the case for giving, which is the three-paragraph statement as to why you really wanna give money to us. I know that we have some history with consultant, it wasn't a happy one, that a prior administration went out and hired one who came back with a case and the whole campaign, and, like, none of what they said was true, or it was...
Yeah.
Kind of a pretty ugly situation, but I think we should consider that. So, what I'd like to do is hear any, any suggestions that people have right now, and then maybe, maybe I could draft up a paragraph or two that's a call for, for volunteers to go the next, go the next step. I think, I think the, the committee's charge should be to develop a plan that the board will then approve and get behind, and then to continue to improve the campaign, and to continue to, or to, to continue to begin to build an alumni organization.
So, I have a whole, I mean, the Development slash Fundraising Committee has been challenged for ten-plus years, I mean, for the existence of the school. We have tried many different things. First, I'd love to be on the committee. I think Thomas' point is really strong, is that the donations I've seen are driving the past, the common vector I've seen is a parent who happened to work for a corporation X, Y, Z, and found out that they had a donation program, or had a company match, or a large set of equipment that was sitting in the closet, and that's been the method, it's been very spotty, up and down. We've got some humongous successes, we've got some small successes, but it's, it's variable. So, I think trying to get the emphasis where we could reach out, as part of the new Development Committee, where we could reach out to corporations and have a program to do that should be part of the effort, but I think we should also focus in and keep going what we have. I won't want to throw everything out, say, we've gotten this annual giving campaign, it works, it could be better. I think part of it will improve just from the culture of the school and the success of the school. I think that will cause some success there, and a new, refound emphasis on corporate, seeking out corporate donors.
Well, you know, there's also, I think there's more with the emphasis on more PD. If your teachers are out there, the teachers are all wearing AMSA hats, right? They are AMSA ambassadors when they're out there. It's not just PD, but there is an opportunity to talk to all the other people that are around. I think early on, teachers were involved, too, right? Much more so in the last couple of years.
So, what's the AMSA hat budget?
So, one question is, is, is it worth, where are we getting our... And, to be honest, I'm so removed from the Development Committee, so forgive my ignorance, but is it worth, in fact, to your point earlier on, the note, that we've seen corporate donations through parents to do two things. One is actually seek out through maybe a, a few letter campaigns, or whatever, a letter campaign, to get more parents involved in the Development Committee, the ones who might be able to make a difference.
Yes.
Because so, some folks, you know, think about joining committees or whatever, but maybe being very proactive about that, and that, in turn, some of them may have expertise in this area, I don't know, and they're just not being asked. And then, and then even beyond that, having the right type of letter campaign or whatever around, in fact, them helping, individual parents helping by reaching out to their companies to somehow help AMSA. Again, this is just really broad, broad brush ideas, but, you know, somehow doing...
Yeah, I think that's helpful, because it's how you wanna, the, another thing that a Development Committee can be, many board committees can be, but, is an off-and-on rant for trustees.
Yeah.
Is the people who wanna, you know, and they're, for people who like schmoozing and like fundraising, it's a way to get, you know, get involved in a fairly high-profile way without committing huge amounts, so there's, there's that, too. And I think there's what's tricky, one of the many tricky things, is we have to do all this opportunistic stuff, we also need a strategy, and the strategy...
Yeah.
Well, we need, we need to do a lot more of both, but we can't neglect the, the strategy for, just scouring for opportunities.
I'll just, just add one thing. If you think about it, so, we are challenged, right, in terms of the amount we're receiving, but if there were ever a school that should be able to raise funds based on their performance and based on their mission, it should be this school. So, we have something behind us, so, but to your point, we need the right strategy and the right involvement with, from various folks and so forth.
I mean, just picking up on what you're saying, the, you know, the, the school is a STEM school. We are in the STEM, you know, the STEM state.
Yeah.
Well, okay, maybe we're not the Silicon Valley, but we're number two.
I mean, we, we have a plethora of companies that are focused in, you know, science, technology,
engineering, and mathematics, you know, right, right in our backyard here. They really want, they just don't know it, but they want to be affiliated with us. They do. And we need to give them that understanding.
Right, and here's an example of how complex that can be, because I know that from work that we've done over the last couple of years, is that for a, for most biofarm or technology companies, we're not a match for the philanthropy budget, because they wanna focus on low-income schools, low-income neighborhoods. As Boston Scientific told us that to our face, you're just not interesting to us. Now, but we would be interested in, for somebody who wants to, who wants to just support the best, who wants to be part of that meritocracy, you know, we're attracted to that donor, and that could be a corporate donor, and that may be, that may be some philanthropy money, or it may be other kinds of money in the company. We're up for marketing money, and that's why this alumni stuff is so exciting, because, you know, if we could talk to the right person at Boston Scientific, if they could help brand the five-year reunion, that's really worth money to them. That's, that's even not, that, that's, that's not out of a charitable budget, that'd be out of a market budget or an HR development budget. So, that, this is all the kind of stuff that, you know, we need some people to sit around and think about, maybe get some guidance. And I think what I'd like to do is draft up a couple of paragraphs to present back and dissolve the committee, invite, dissolve the committee, articulate what we expect from it, and then invite all the volunteers to return if they, if they wish, but look for people to fill that.
I was gonna say, it's almost like, to me, if we created a value proposition for the company to want to invest...
Yep.
...into an AMSA, which makes me think about the next leg of after AMSA, this college. So, now, if you then connect internships or summer jobs to that particular company, then they're potentially training future employees when they graduate from college.
And there are some companies that are so far-seeing that they will allow minors to come in.
Bring in interns, AMSA interns.
Could I just share that with the whole board? I just was trying to... But, we did, and actually, Padmaja is the one who really drove this. The, the governor set up a Massachusetts, Mass, a Commonwealth-sponsored STEM internship program for high school students, met with our CEO, who said, "Glass, I wanna do this." Padmaja and I were talking, I said, "Maybe we could get one in." We have four of our seven high school interns are from AMSA.
That's awesome. That is amazing.
So, that is, so...
That's worth applause.
Yeah, that is worth applause.
So, so I do think that there's, I do think that there's something going on. I don't know, the, the fact that the governor's pushing that, that means that at Vertex and Shire and all these other places, something's happening, probably. So, we might wanna investigate into that as well.
And to your point about positioning it, and this goes back to strategy, right? About positioning it. I mean, I understand Boston Scientific's profile in terms of who they're aiming for, but the other aspect is, you know, I don't know how, I, I aim to, but I, based on what I'm hearing, you know, there's, there's challenge with our salaries for teachers, right? There could be a positioning of that in terms of helping to make sure that we sustain these types of schools that are doing outstanding work, particularly with respect to their faculty.
Well, maybe people just need a, a list of, here's how you can contribute.
Yeah.
You know, you can contribute money, you can, internships or equipment to the science labs, or, you know, so...
I'm, I'm just curious, Chris, have, and maybe we've done this in the past, but have we looked at other charter schools or other schools and, to see which ones, what schools are the most successful in terms of fundraising, what they do, what they don't do, what...
We've done some of that. Rich people's schools are very successful at fundraising. St. Mark's raises a lot of them.
I was gonna say, St. Mark's would be the obvious one.
Among different charter schools, it's very early days for the four or five that I've spoken to, where it's, they're kind of where we are. Some of them have committees, some don't. A couple of them have hired professionals, one hired professional and let him go four months later, so somebody wasn't ready for that. So, it really isn't, you know, there's, there's that, or else there's Boston Latin that's been doing this for two hundred years. And so, it's, it's hard to find...
Lots of alumni.
Yeah, they've got a lot of alumni, we don't, yeah.
For both of those schools.
It's hard to find good models, and other charter schools, you know, they're, 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 you know, lower-income populations that they're directly facing, so it's...
There's some, there, I mean, there's like a charter school in, in inner-city that does really well with development, but they are very low-income. I think it's like a Dorchester, and, and, you know, they're, they're free and reduced population, something like ninety percent, and they have, but they have somehow tapped into certain of, like, the bigwigs in Boston to get, you know, really, they, their philanthropy is amazing. But that's a different situation, so...
So, September.
Okay. All right, yeah. September, okay. All right, that sounds good. Governance, you didn't have any other report, did you?
No, we didn't meet this month, so the primary was the nominations.
Okay. That being said, then, I think we're done for the open meeting. I have a list of the things that we talked about for next month, which we'll follow up on, and so, I will entertain a motion to go into executive session.
I make a motion that we move towards our executive session.
And why would we do that?
To discuss litigation strategies, consider the purchase and lease of real property strategy for negotiating with represented and non-represented personnel.
Well, for that, sure.
Second, someone second?
Second.
Okay, Chris, second. We need a roll-call vote to go into executive session. Ken?
Yeah. Yes.
Jill?
Yes.
Uh, yes? Allison?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Yes.
Okay, we are going to invite Dr. Lewis in with us, Brianna Murphy, Liz Saul, and Roger Jarrett. Okay? And Allison, we will call you back from the, from the guidance conference room.
Okay, thanks.
That is so loud.